...of the United States of America, a republic for which it stands, a nation under God, and a vision of liberty and justice for all.
All right, good morning, everybody. So this morning we will have a commissioner's offices requesting the board appoint Deborah as acting commissioner clerk for Tuesday, March 25th.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
All right. Commissioner Sweeney?
Hi.
Commissioner Rear?
Hi.
Commissioner Sperry?
Hi.
Okay. And the financials for March 20th of 2014 to...
Well, how are you going to come up and explain this one because this one's kind of unusual.
Oh.
He always puts you on the hot seat.
Yeah.
Um, yeah, the one that Dave approved last Thursday was a supplemental for JFAS for their WIA fund, which is...
Workforce investment.
It just needed to, it's where the financials are processed for the Madcock. They needed to get that in line with what the state budget is to put supplement on for the transfer.
Because they actually, they run the transaction through the county system as if it was sped here, even though it's not sped here. So we had to, we had to add it to the financials to have it all balance out.
That's right.
Okay. All right, if we could read number two then.
Commissioner's office will report on financials from March 20th, 2014, Resolution fourteen dash zero four six, as approved by the county administrator pursuant to the motion approved January 16th, 2014, to authorize the county administrator to execute in the case of lack of form of commissioners and/or if session is canceled on a regular financial day or on a day when financials need to be approved. Required approvals for county financials on behalf of the board during year 2014 as authorized by O R C three oh five point three zero.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Commissioner Sweeney?
Aye.
Commissioner Rear?
Aye.
Hi, motion approved. Then we'll do the...
Yes.
Okay. We'll do the regular financials then for today.
Financials today include an appropriation transfer from a contingency account to return appropriations to the sheriff and crook of courts offices for reimbursements that were deposited into the general fund, transfers out of the general fund for portions of 2014 funding for the youth center and the office of community and economic development, travel request for Department of Jobs and Family Services, payment to Trapeze Software for the software maintenance contract for the transit department amount of $21,229, payment to Vehicle Service Group for the purchase and installation of lift equipment for the transit department in amount of $15,389.68, and a payment to Gatchock Building Company for pay request number six for the board to use I C F D D downsizing project in the amount of $81,087.40.
One quick question, Eddie, on that Trapeze system with the transit, is that a, is that something that gets, is that, that's paid for through the, when we did the, the earlier grant with the state, that funds are in place for that, or is that something that we're...
No, that's, that is, that's paid for through the state and federal. That's their dispatch software.
Right.
This is just the maintenance.
Maintenance, okay. Okay, all right, but that's up there for that, from that, from those dollars that we receive in from that, not...
Right.
It's coming from us?
Not right.
Okay. All right, if we have a motion then if everything's...
Okay, I'll make that motion.
Second.
Commissioner Sweeney?
Aye.
Commissioner Rear?
Aye.
Commissioner Sperry?
Hi, financials are approved, thanks, Eddie. Get right back, work on that, right? For prosecutor Jim, do you want to come up?
How are you?
Good morning.
How's everybody doing? Good to see you.
Hold on, I'm not going to do all that. This one?
There we go.
Okay. So, um, the equitable sharing agreement. What this is, is a bunch of nonsense paperwork that the feds make you fill out, and frankly, I, I, I wasn't going to even do it and bring it before you. The, the feds have a rule where if they seize money, they'll share it with local law enforcement, drug money, for example.
Oh, that's good.
And as far as I can tell, it, it hasn't happened ever...
Ever!
In our county, if not for many years. And then obviously we have to go through all this paperwork and all this bureaucracy because it's a federal government. But when I was looking at it before I threw it in the circular file, I thought, you know what's going to happen?
Yeah.
Some drug dealer's going to get popped.
Hit. It'll be a lot.
Yeah, for a million dollars, and we're going to lose forty percent of it. So, um, thinking that way, I thought, well, in, in the off chance that, that we might hit the lottery and that would happen, I'll come up here and present this to you. So, um, what it is, is in order for us to, in order for the feds to share proceeds with us, we have to be part of this, you know, agreement, and if we're not on board with it and something happens, then we can lose out of the money. So I thought it was worth a shot of at least up here and spend a few minutes.
Buying a lottery ticket.
Exactly.
Boy, if you had it.
Yeah, it'd be nice.
Okay.
Any other questions, or?
Okay, thanks. So number four then.
Prosecutor's office is requesting the board approve and authorize the president of the board to execute the equitable sharing agreement and certification form zero, O H zero two eight zero one three A, containing the annual certification report showing the summary of equitable sharing activity for F Y 2012.
Do you want to read number five also?
Prosecutor's office is requesting the board approve and authorize the president of the board to execute the equitable sharing agreement and certification form O H zero two eight zero one three A, containing the annual certification report showing the summary of equitable sharing activity for F Y 2013.
Okay, I'll make a motion for those two.
Second.
Commissioner Sweeney?
Aye.
Commissioner Rear?
Aye.
Commissioner Sperry?
Hi, both motions will stand approved.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I'll keep my fingers crossed.
Let us know.
Okay, thanks.
Bye-bye. Thanks for the email, too, and the letter, I got that.
Okay.
Appreciate it. The 2014. Yep. So number six, we'll have the Department on Aging.
Good morning.
Morning.
Okay, are you?
Good. It's cold.
Ugh, you seem to get rid of it. Good morning. The application that I brought up two weeks ago to apply for that eighty percent federal funding for that M V one vehicle, I made an error on attachment R with the wrong M P O, so I was just wondering if we could correct, I corrected that, so.
Number six.
Mr. Speedy, Larry.
All right, you want to go ahead and read number six?
The Department on Aging is requesting the board approve and authorize the president of the board to execute the attachment R, resolution for certification of a public body in connection to the Ohio Department of Transportation, F Y 2014, Ohio's specialized transportation program application.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Commissioner Sweeney?
Aye.
Commissioner Rear?
Aye.
Commissioner Sperry?
Hi, motion approved.
We had a resignation in our adult day services. After the interview process, we found a fantastic candidate, Kathy Wells, that we'd like to extend the position to.
Okay. And you want to read number seven then?
Department on Aging is requesting the board approve hiring Kathy Wells to the position of part-time adult daycare aide, number one zero zero eight, to be effective March 31st, 2014, for up to twenty-five hours per week at a rate of nine dollars and twelve cents per hour. After the successful completion of a one hundred and eighty day probationary period, the rate will increase to nine sixty per hour.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Commissioner Sweeney?
Aye.
Commissioner Rear?
Aye.
Commissioner Sperry?
Hi, motion approved.
And lastly, Elizabeth Latola, she was our summer help last year. She stayed on as a seasonal employee when she was on her breaks from college, and certainly we'd like her to be summer help for this year as well, so we'd like to do a, a status change for her.
Good to read number eight then.
Department on Aging is requesting the board reclassify Elizabeth Latola from full-time temporary seasonal help, zero one zero one, to full-time summer help, zero one zero one, to be effective May first, 2014, through September 30th, 2014, twenty-one weeks, maximum of eight hundred and forty hours, at a rate of eight dollars and fifty cents per hour.
Sumo.
Second.
Commissioner Sweeney?
Aye.
Commissioner Rear?
Aye.
Hi, motion approved.
Thank you very much.
All right, Kathy from the airport, how are you?
I'm good.
Kathy.
Morning.
How's everybody?
Good.
Very good. Well, today I am here to get permission to advertise for bids for our ODOT project. This is a project that Embardley applied for, already approved, where we're just going to advertise for the bids and bid more than fully. The engineer's estimate for the project is about a hundred and sixty-two thousand dollars total, so we're hoping that the bids are kind of a little bit less than that, but that's what we're looking at. And this is a pavement rehabilitation project for areas of our ramp that FAA will not fund. There are areas of our ramp where we have a disperse threshold, and also where we have some painters that eventually have to come down, but in the meantime, we have to repair the pavement around those, and FAA will not fund those because they are not on our master plan going forward.
All right, if we could read number nine.
Airport authority is requesting the board grant permission to advertise for bids for the F Y 2014 Ohio Airport Grant Program, Reconstruct Apron and Taxi Way, to be held Monday, May 5th, 2014, at 5:00 P. M. Notice this bid opening will be advertised on April 10th, 2014, April 17th, 2014, April 24th, 2014, and on the county website.
Sumo.
Second.
Commissioner Sweeney?
Aye.
Commissioner Rear?
Aye.
Commissioner Sperry?
Hi, motion stands approved. Thank you, Kathy.
Thank you very much.
Okay, I'm Eddie from Archives. Morning.
Morning.
We have a new employee, as you know, and she's working out very well. She had an opportunity to participate in the family outing and asked if she could have an unpaid date. That's what this is for.
All right, so if we could read number 10 then.
The Archives Record Center is requesting the board grant personal leave of absence without pay for Pamela Baster on April 4th, 2014. This unpaid leave of absence will extend probationary period an additional eight hours.
Sumo.
Second.
Commissioner Sweeney?
Aye.
Commissioner Rear?
Aye.
Commissioner Sperry?
Hi, motion stands approved. Thank you, have a good day.
You too.
And Mr. Hollison from the Building Department.
Hello.
How are you?
Morning.
Good, good to see you.
Good to see you. Well, it's spring.
I know, I know.
Almost.
You think? I don't know, but...
By the calendar.
Got to warm up someday.
According to the calendar.
I'm here to ask the board to renew the contracts for our commercial plan exam that had done on a contract basis. We have two, two architects that do all the planning for our commercial. Basically, the contract is the same, hasn't changed.
Oh, it's the same, two guys?
Yes.
That was my question.
And, uh...
Just a minute.
Same contract. Mine was just, just like... Last year, we actually had to come back and ask for a little more money because we spent what we thought we were going to take in.
Yeah.
This money is paid for by the permit, so...
Oh, good.
Whatever money is put into that account...
Sure.
And they're trying, the auditor's trying to get it out of like a revolving account, and money goes in, so it's...
So it's always there?
It's always there.
Mm-hmm.
So, but if we have to come back and ask for more, that's a good thing because it's...
That means building's going up.
Money's up, so...
Good. Sounds like a lot of money.
Okay, so then, if we can read, that's the eleven and twelve, yep. Those.
The Building Department is requesting the board approve and execute the licensed architect contract 2014 with Al Neil Hoffman to perform architectural reviews for commercial and industrial structures at a rate of seventy dollars per hour for the term March 31st, 2014, through March, through March 31st, 2015. The Building Department is requesting the board approve and execute the licensed architect contract 2014 with Richard Smith to perform architectural reviews for commercial and industrial structures at a rate of seventy dollars per hour for the term March 31st, 2014, through March 31st, 2015.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Commissioner Sweeney?
Aye.
Commissioner Rear?
Aye.
Commissioner Sperry?
Just because of the, you know, the situations with myself, I'm going to abstain from that just because I've probably gone for a review in front of the two, so I'm just going to abstain of the two of them.
I, I do have a question for you. What happens at our, do we have architectural reviews for residential, is that only through the zoning?
No, residential plan reviews and stuff goes through my department. I'm, my staff.
Your staff, yeah. Because I, I was wondering, like, in the city, you know, they could do architecture, I used to always wonder that, like, in months, and do they do architecture review, because some villages and cities...
Now, review, if you're talking about cosmetic stuff...
Yes, yes, yes.
That's all going. We only look at the structural.
Just the structure. Yeah, because some, like, you know, Gates Mills, they got really strict after.
No.
You can have any color you want, as long as it's white with green shit.
No, we have, we have nothing, we don't want that.
Yeah, yeah, I, I just was curious about that because that does keep, you know, neighborhoods pretty homogeneous.
And again, the, the, the commercial plan review also is not for cosmetic.
It's structural.
Structural and...
You want to make sure that...
Correct.
Yeah, that, that makes sense, I mean, certainly, but cosmetically, I, I would see where cities and some villages might want to, you know, have that when you're looking at houses. I mean, you don't want a house to be put up and it's purple and bright orange.
Yeah, I mean, most of it's zoning, but for, for this, I, I could tell you that we do a good job here.
Structurally.
We've always been great to work with. You know, it seems like you do a great job, you know, communicating with them all the time, and it's, it's, it's good, it's good.
Yeah, I think we, we did, yeah, we did, we did it, yeah. Good.
So motion will stand, both of those will stand approved then?
Thanks, thank you, Mike.
Yeah, thank you, Mike. Yep, you two now. So Department of Jobs and Family Services, hi Gina.
Morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Our children's prevention and I'm going to, for our Children's Services.
All right, so we're here just to ask that you acknowledge April as Child Abuse Prevention Month. It's a national thing that they, they celebrate the prevention of child abuse in the month of April. And so this year, we do a lot of the same things that we've done in the past where we'll have our takeoff reception April 1st at the agency.
Yeah, I think we...
Okay.
I'm just checking to make sure it's on there.
Just to make sure that you are speaking. And then we are going to have our five K race and fun run on the 5th. We're going to have our pinwheels...
Okay.
Whether, that's what I was telling Tim, hopefully we'll get them in the ground.
Where are those going to go? Are you going to put them...
They're going to be at Junction Alley again.
All we do is take a sledgehammer and a little...
Right, so all you'll see is the top because we'll be so far down, because, you know, the sticks will all break trying to get them in the ground.
As long as they're not covered by snow.
Yeah, you got to say, you want to leave them stick up a little bit so you can see them above the snow.
Right, so there are supposed to be five hundred and thirty-three of them in the ground at Junction, again, we'll see if that works or not.
Ah.
And so, yeah.
Okay, Junction is, they have...
Yeah, Junction is dealing, they've been a wonderful support for us.
Really?
So not only do they allow us to have the pinwheels, they're going to also make the donation for every car that they sell.
That's nice. That's wonderful.
Mm-hmm. Yeah.
So there's five hundred and thirty-three documented cases of child abuse?
There's, there's five hundred and thirty-three cases that we screened in to say that we were going to go investigation.
This year?
That's the criteria. In 2013.
13.
Yeah, it's slightly down from the year before, but...
But still a lot of cases.
Right, and I think as we talked last time, you know, even though the number is maybe a little bit down as far as what we wouldn't investigate, the severity of the cases is definitely...
Said the truth.
Yeah, sad, really.
If we can read number 14. I'm sorry, 13.
The Department of Job and Family Services is requesting the board approve and execute Resolution fourteen dash zero four eight, recognized in April, 2014, as Child Abuse Prevention Month.
Sumo.
Second.
Commissioner Sweeney?
Aye.
Commissioner Rear?
Aye.
Commissioner Sperry?
Hi, motion stands approved. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. Do you, do you want to take the resolution with you, or?
Sure. Let me see if it's all signed. Congrats.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Transit Department?
I don't think, yeah, I don't think it's anybody here.
It's just, this is just filling a vacancy. Okay. Dave, on this, with the advertise for the position of part-time driver for less than thirty hours per week, is there a way that we could possibly look to reduce the number of part-time and maybe add like one full-time, or is there...
We could, I mean, I think the, I think the rationale has always been, you know, keep the amount we're paying out for hospitalization.
Yeah.
Allow for more flexibility. But I mean, I could, you know, I'm meeting with Mike tomorrow, we could talk about that if it looks like really long-term.
Because just looking at it, how many part-time, there's, it's a pretty big fleet of part-time people.
Yeah, yeah.
And it's, you know, are, are they required to have like a certain number of hours that they're, that they want them to keep, just to, and I guess, at the end of the day, it's just, you know, a traditional employee, it's like if we can keep the part-timers that we have with sufficient number of hours, reduce the number that we have to have on staff, you know, or is there...
I'll talk to Mike about that tomorrow.
Yeah.
I'll let you know, yeah. I'll meet with him for lunch.
All right. And if we can read number 14?
Transit Department is requesting the board grant permission to advertise for the position of part-time driver, number two two one zero dash one, for less than thirty hours per week. This position will remain posted until filled.
Sumo.
Second.
Commissioner Sweeney?
Aye.
Commissioner Rear?
Aye.
Commissioner Sperry?
Hi, motion stands approved. And Doug, on Water Resources?
Good. Hornet, how are you?
Very good, thank you.
All right, the first one is an annual thing that we do, the USDA requires every year that we get this form along with several different other things between the auditor's office and our office. They send us a letter, we put all this together, and we mail it out. And this one's just a basic simple form here, certified in the government body, showing the commissioners and the auditor, and just basically needs a figure of your year of what's changed. This will cover our apartment plant, our Quilla Village project, and our Shugrin Falls Park project from twenty, twenty-five years ago. Most of the loans we have, USDA go forty years, so some of these projects are way back, so this covers all of them at one time.
Both of them.
All three of them.
That's for the plan upgrade?
It covers all three, yeah, all three projects. Anything we have a loan or grant with, with them, with them, then this covers it for the year.
Okay.
Okay, so if we could read number 15?
The Department of Water Resources is requesting the board approve and authorize the president of the board to execute certified list of rubbering body as part of the USDA annual reporting requirements.
Oh, I'll make that motion, I'm in Lollapalooza. I'm thinking about, yes.
Commissioner Rear?
Aye.
Commissioner Sperry?
Hi, motion stands approved. And then Doug, on number 16?
Sure. Brian Benson, who was our summer help, and then he became a maintenance worker, and now he's got his operator's license, and he meets the requirements of one year, so as part of the union contract, he can post internally to, to promote that slot.
And if, and that's for, what is that for? Oh, just plant operator, okay.
Right, he'll, he'll end up being a route operator for like five, three of the plants.
Okay.
Yeah.
Any luck with McFarland yet?
With...
With the, to fill that?
We actually, we interviewed two people yesterday, and we, Colin just gave us two more resumes, and we're going to review that.
Oh, great, so you're getting some, some action on that?
We are, yeah.
Okay. All right, if we could read number 16?
The Department of Water Resources is requesting the board grant permission to advertise internally for the position of plant operator one, number two three two six, for a period of ten days in accordance with the union contract.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Commissioner Sweeney?
Aye.
Commissioner Rear?
Aye.
Commissioner Sperry?
Hi, motion stands approved. Thank you, Doug.
Sure.
And Mr. Catell for the Engineers Office?
Morning again.
Good morning, John, how are you?
Well, Engineer's Office has, the first item on here is asking you to award contract to Shugrin Valley Paving for the resurfacing of Jug Street, that'd be from four twenty-two on up to Patch.
Boy, that's a ways out here.
Yeah. The, uh, Shugrin Valley, into Shugrin Valley Paving, they're a local company, but they've never had one of our contracts before, and that's why we held off on this one, the other ones you guys approved earlier, this particular one. So we, we, you know, as we do when, when someone has done workforce, we did some research and, and asked them to send us, you know, any certifications they have, how liquid their company is, what equipment they own, the training they've had, and so forth. It, it came out good, they're pre-certified with ODOT, pre-qualified with ODOT and everything else, so we saw no reason to not award the contract to them, being the lowest bidder, and we'll go forward, and, and we expect to have a good project from them.
Just a clarification, the term, the bid bond submitted shall be served as the performance bond for this project, bid bond and not commediate, that term, what does that mean?
A bid bond serves as, um, when, when they, they turn in their bids to us, you know, and don't do what they're supposed to, or, or maybe the company goes bankrupt in the process, we pull their bond, the bonding company pays to have another company come in and finish the job, so if it protects, if it protects everybody from something happening, boy, I can only think of two instances that I've seen that in, in the twenty-some years I've been around. Those generally relate to, not necessarily our contracts, but developers putting in subdivisions, where that's more of a private kind of work, but they're required to meet county standards, and if that development company goes belly up in the middle, you know, there's people holding back on, not a lot of stuff, as far as, you know, our inspection, and does it get dedicated as a road, but it's not finished, and, you know, all that goes into it, but anyhow, the, the bond does just protect us.
Okay.
All right, number seventeen, if we could read?
County Engineers' Office is requesting the board award the bid to Shugrin Valley Paving Incorporated for the asphalt resurfacing of Jug Street, County Highway forty-six, section C through E, in Troy Township, in the amount of three hundred fifty-six thousand, seven hundred twenty-four dollars and fifty cents, as they represented the lowest and best bid. The bid bond submitted shall be held to serve as the performance bond for this project.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Commissioner Smeedy?
Aye.
Commissioner Reer?
Aye.
Commissioner Sperry?
Aye, motion approved.
I was going to mention, even when I had my computer consulting company, whenever I'd get a project for a company or an operation or any government work, they'd always require a bid bond, it used to usually be ten percent of the total cost, and as soon as you'd finished the job, and if everything was good, then you'd get it back. If you, if you chose to give them an actual certified check, they would hold that, and so your money would be like in, you know?
Tied up.
Tied up, but I, I did many of those, but everything, out there is, everything went okay. I'm going to have my money back. Sorry, I just mentioned that.
Oh, no, that's, yeah, good point.
Because I do.
And I will mention with that one too, the Engineers' estimate was four hundred thousand dollars, and it came in at three fifty-six cents, so we did well on it.
How much did it estimate?
We estimated four hundred thousand.
Oh, okay. That's a big savings.
Yeah, yeah, the asphalt company's been very aggressive in paving companies this year. We're not seeing that so much from the excavation companies that work like that, the numbers seem to be high, it's reflecting, you know, the fuel costs and aggregate costs have really risen, but for some reason, the asphalt companies are all beating each other up, and we're getting good prices right now, so.
Okay.
The next item I have up here is actually our stormwater permit, Carmella's here too, we work in conjunction to renew our permit, Carmella's done a ton of work here too. Joy, come in, help us out.
Hi.
How are you?
Morning.
Yeah, we're, we're submitting for this year's MPDES, small MS four permit that we're required to do, and this is the same as what we've turned in every year, just with all updated information, all we're asking you to do is acknowledge receipt of it, and I'm actually the one that signs off on it, which I already have, and, you know, in there, it, it goes through all the education stuff that Soil and Water's done, it's, it's quite extensive, page after page after page, of all the education requirements they've met, so we can hold this permit, and not only that, but then the, we have three co-permittees, and that would be Russell, Bainbridge, and Chester, they used to have their own permits, and they're quite pleased to not be under our permit, and Carmella and I can help them out all the time. For instance, Bainbridge got audited last year, which normally is just, as you can imagine, EPA audit is horrendous.
This is under the stormwater phase two?
It's under the stormwater.
It is required and mandated?
Yes.
Right now, it's, it's Chester, Bainbridge, Auburn?
Russell.
Well, Auburn did get a sliver in, but they're not on this permit yet, because they're not required yet, and we've, we've had some discussion about that.
Yeah, does it look like it's going to be woven or tore off like?
It will, and that was based on the two thousand and ten census.
Wow.
But EPA has not really caught up with it yet.
They're trying to get all.
In one breath, they say they have, and the other breath, they say they're not, so we'll.
There's a, there's a workshop coming up, and they're supposedly going to unveil this.
It seems like they're, it seems like they're undermanned in the EPA.
Or overmanned.
Or overmanned.
Or overregulating. Not doing anything man, or?
I wish it just would.
It's kind of like.
Yeah, thank you.
Overmanned, underworked.
Underworked, yeah.
There's going to be, there's a multi-party memorandum of understanding that'll come before you folks on probably the April eighth, the way it's working, because it's being signed by all the townships, it was signed by the Soil and Water Board yesterday morning, and needs to be signed by the Health District, they're having a meeting on April first.
About?
This is a mul, this is a document that has to be signed by, there's eighteen copies of this, six per township.
Oh.
And then all the parties are signing, you have, you have Stormwater, you have the Health District.
The Health District.
You have each of the boards of township trustees.
J's.
You have.
Water Resources.
Well, Doug is signed for Water Resources, Joe is signed for the Engineer, and then it finally comes to you folks to sign last.
And what that is, that came about as a result of that Bainbridge audit, they said, you have no agreement in place with all these entities, you, you know, both Soil and Water and myself.
It's all verbal, we all do this.
Yeah.
You have nothing in writing that, yes, you're going to do this, yes, you're going to do that.
So, so one of the findings in the audit is, you don't have anything written in place saying how your relationship is.
I see.
Okay, you guys are, while they didn't disagree, were doing everything right, they just said it's not written anywhere, so we wanted it.
We had a, we had a very basic one back in two thousand and three, that was mostly what we did for everybody, but all the entities that worked for the county to get it done wasn't listed, and that's what we said, maybe if I put something together that has all this, the EPA thought it was a great idea, goes, this is what we need everybody to do, then there's no doubt, everything's on one document, and we're not hunting and sifting through papers trying to find who's doing what.
Yeah, and, and it's, you know, in, in the beginning, we talked about one MOU, but we decided to make it individual per township, because at any point, one of them could pull out, and then we start all over, or in this case, most likely Auburn will be joined in, so then we'd have to redo, David knows the pain of what this is, and Chase.
Yeah, I was going to say, all the parties have agreed, isn't it?
So, so what we've done is.
This was pretty far along, it's not like we, we, you waited till the last minute.
No.
It was pretty far along, and then, then there was some objection by someone, and rightfully so.
Yeah.
And, and so they had to go back and be done, so the way it's written now, everybody's on board.
Well, yes.
Yes. Off lot, that's all.
Off lot.
Just some changes in words, but important changes.
Well, we want, we want to be on the same page, I suspect.
Yeah.
Yeah.
One quick question, I was talking to Mike Petzschulow, apparently there was some discussion about this in Chester.
They signed, they signed a document last week.
They signed.
Yeah, and Mike opposed that, and he opposed it because if you look at the actual MS four guidelines, which are on their website, item number five talks about evaluating the effectiveness of the program, and he was concerned that there's no, there's nothing really in place to evaluate the effectiveness of the program, nor are there measurable goals for the program. And so my question is this, have we looked at the effectiveness of the program? We're going to spend money, spend our time, yada, 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 do all those things EPA mandates us to do, are we in fact checking to see if it's doing what it's supposed to do?
Is your question, are we, are we following up on EPA and seeing that their regulations make sense?
No, 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 the, the MSA guidelines are very clear, there's five bullets.
We, we follow up on everything we do, and, and yes, there are some measurable effects. Carmella has a lot of stuff that she's done within the community to make changes, you know, whether it's how farmers, you know, control runoff or whatever, bio swales, everything else, and then the aspect that I've taken mostly is within the, the facilities, the highway garage, the, the highway garages and the potential hazardous runoff from those and so forth like that, and, and I've reviewed all those sites, inside and out, Bainbridge, Russell, and Chester, and the way their garages function and stuff, stuff like that.
Who actually manages the program, Carmella or you?
We, we do it together.
You do, okay, so, and both of five says, what is the effectiveness of the programs? Are, are we checking the effectiveness of the program?
Yeah, if, if you looked at the permit, you would see that, that each individual item that has been accomplished for this program has a measure of effectiveness in it, have you ever read the permit itself?
No, I've not really.
Okay, we can get you a copy of it if you'd like.
Okay, I appreciate it, well, that was Mike's.
But I, I understand, yeah, I understand what you're saying and what he's saying too, this unfortunately is something that we've been forced to do and have to do.
That's the problem.
So, you know, we're just trying to stay in compliance with the rules.
We might debate the whole have-to thing, but that's okay.
Oh, yeah, yeah, and, you know, certainly Carmella and I find no joy in doing this, so.
I mean, each, each of those three townships has to do this, and if they weren't in this MOU, they'd have to do it all by themselves.
And, and back when Chester was on their own, they did get an audit, and they failed miserably, and, and they, they found it.
They failed miserably.
And, and, and it just was so painful and costly to the township, and I think if you talk to Bainbridge Township, especially Jim Stanek, their superintendent, he couldn't have been happier how, while it was very painful to go through that audit last year, he couldn't have been any happier on how Carmella and myself helped them out, we got through and did what we needed to do, and resolved it at, you know, obviously less, less pain than what Chester had to go through when they were on their own, and, and by them being co-permittees on our, our permit, they end up costing them, like Chester was like four hundred dollars, if they were on their own, it would be several thousand, so, that, that alone saves them money, plus they get, they get our expertise at no cost.
So often as a, and from a citizen's perspective, so often the federal government forces us to go through these programs, and they're not effective, and so it's interesting, doesn't it know the effectiveness, because if they're not effective, we can go back then to Dave Joyce or whoever, and, and try to improve further, and so that's the reason I brought it up, and I thank you for, I thank you for the conversation.
And a lot of the proving the effectiveness, to get it to a level that maybe some residents or people of the county want to see, that takes money, and you want to have all that testing done to evaluate all these things, somebody's got to back it up, somebody's got to come up with the dollars to make it happen, and we also got to get support from the people at the commissioners' level, when we see a problem, we have to feel that we can come here and get the support from the higher-ups to say, hey, there's a problem, we need to pursue this other action, but when we don't get that kind of support, it, it kind of falls, falls apart rapidly, so following up is a major, major item, and we need that support to make that happen, to get those measurable goals intact.
Thanks.
We can read number eighteen.
So this is just an acknowledgement.
Yes, it's an acknowledgement.
The County Engineer and Soil and Modern Conservation District are requesting the board review and acknowledge the Jug County two thousand thirteen Ohio EPA NPES small MS four general permit as you will report.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Commissioner Smeedy?
Aye.
Commissioner Reer?
Aye.
Aye, motion approved. Well, they're both here, I wanted to ask you, where do we stand with that issue on forty-four and with that overrun with the, yeah, with the, I can't remember what his name is, I actually got a call last week on it, where there was like a clear cut on the other side, what's going on with that?
They did the clear cut, they, they had followed the procedures if they needed to for the clear cuts, sometime near the end of the year, the owner of the property that did the clear cut started grading an area, so they started doing something again, so we noted it, we let them know in November, they need to do some type of sediment management for the property, and went into the deep freeze, and not a lot of anybody could do anything because the ground was frozen, one of the items, we also indicated that there was drainage issues with ODOT's ditch and the road pipes, the driveway pipe to along the ODOT road, and it was all, it's been, it's all filled in, not because of just the sediment, but over years, it's been a ditch that doesn't exist, so we had asked ODOT to take care of it, it was brought up numerous times, why is it just being taken care of? So, see, it came, it came to light again, and then I noticed a couple weeks ago, in the off-hours, ODOT was out there and they ditched the road, they cleaned out the cullards, they cleaned out the, the road, the road cullards too, to make sure that the drainage was working adequately, so what we had asked back in November, ODOT, you know, I, I don't control ODOT, I can just ask them to do things, yeah, so we did ask ODOT to do that, our instructor actually met with the owner on the site, and the owner sent a landscaper out there to put the sediment fence up, we had a small little break of non-frozenness, they could get something in, so they got something in, and as soon as the weather breaks, they'll go get it seeded most of the area that they started grading.
So do you think it'll, that'll work then?
Well, that's, that's what they would be required to do, is get it stabilized, as far as drainage, drainage coming to the people's property, you know, the water always did travel that direction, that is the natural lay of the land, the trees are gone, it has been cleared, so that definitely is getting it quicker, there is no regulation or requirement for clearing operation, they have to do any type of stormwater management, but if the develop, the owner who owns it does decide to build something at some point in time, I don't know what their plans are, it's been on and off, and a lot of discussion, but no plans, there would be some stormwater management that would go in place, ponds and so forth, but until that time, it's just a person owns a piece of property, it's their trees, they can take them out.
Did they sell their trees, is that what they were, they did?
It's usually what happens, I don't know.
Is that what they, yeah.
I don't know why, but they.
Yeah, every time, like even in your bill something, I remember when we added on to our house, you know, I got a notice from Soil and Water that I had to put up my fence, so we had to put this, you know, that plastic thing you put up next to the, because I have a stream on the side of me, and we put that fence up, and anytime you do anything that, where the water would erode off your property, you got to put like that plastic fence up, right?
Silk fence.
Yeah, silk fence, whatever.
Everything.
So you did what you had to do.
To this point, we can do it this way, to the extent we can do it, and the owner could do something with that.
Yeah, you know, there's a, a friend of mine lives out in Thompson, and the, the guy next door logged the property next to her, and it really has made a big difference to her property, but there's not much she can do about it.
Girl allowed to log their property.
If they're allowed to, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
That's why you like to save the trees.
Thank you.
Especially if they're rich.
This one here is.
Oh, we don't have any of those.
Do you want to read number nineteen?
Sure.
Good job.
The Commissioners' Office is requesting the board concur with other township trustees in not requesting a hearing on the liquor license requested by MHN Partners LLC, DBA Auburn Market Express located at one-seven-seven-nine-zero-Ribet Road, Shugrin Falls, CNW five-eight-nine-six-nine-eight-one.
Lord, that is, okay, I'll make that motion.
Second.
Commissioner Smeedy?
Aye.
Commissioner Reer?
Aye.
Commissioner Sperry?
Aye, motion approved. Number twenty.
I'd say twenty and twenty-one, yeah.
Commissioners' Office is requesting the board approve and execute Resolution fourteen dash zero four nine honoring Kyle James Kenyeki for achieving the rank of Eagle Scout, the highest award of advancement bestowed upon West Scout, and the Commissioners' Office requesting the board approve and execute Resolution fourteen dash zero five oh honoring John Paul Lutat for achieving the rank of Eagle Scout, the highest award of advancement bestowed upon West Scout.
Okay, I'll make those motions.
Second.
Commissioner Smeedy?
Aye.
Commissioner Reer?
Aye.
Commissioner Sperry?
Aye, motion approved.
The only other thing, I had a letter here from Judge Fury, but it says, Ohio revised Code Section five-one-four-nine-three-four provides in part if a county desires to receive a subsidy from a subsidy program established under Division A-one of Section five-one-two-four-nine-point-three-one of the URC for community corrections programs as described in Division A-two of that section, the Board of County Commissioners of the County shall establish by resolution as described in this division and maintain a local corrections planning board. In ninety-five, the Board of County Commissioners in Geoghan established the local corrections board, planning board, on January ninth, two thousand and twelve, the County Commissioners appointed certain members to the correction planning board for three-year terms expire in twelve-thirty-one of two thousand and fourteen, one appointment made was Mark Hassett and the judge of Chardan Municipal Court, Chardan Municipal Court Judge is a required member of the planning board and viewing, Judge Hassett has retired, and I would ask the board appoint the Chardan Municipal Court Judge Terry Stapica to fulfill the remaining unexpired portion of Judge Hassett's term, thank you for your time and attention, Honorable Judge David L. Fury. So I guess if.
No, no problem.
We can just ask for a.
Make that motion.
We'll, we'll document that all.
Oh, what, you want to do it now, or?
No, you can, you can do it now.
Yeah, I would make a motion to appoint Terry Stapica, and what's the name of that board?
It's the Corrections Planning.
Correction Planning Board.
Yep.
To fill out the unexpired term of Mark Hassett.
And do we have a second?
I'll give her a second, I'm going to write it down. Okay, I'm sorry, I second.
Okay, Commissioner Smeedy?
Aye.
Commissioner Reer?
Aye.
Commissioner Sperry?
Aye, motion stands approved.
And now we've got what our meeting schedule is here, Thursday, the twenty-seventh of this, this week, Commissioners will hold a regular session for the six-thirty PM meeting.
Here.
Yeah, probably here.
Yep. The four-one, Commissioners will hold regular session, four-one, Jobs and Family Services kick off the reception for Child Abuse Prevention Month, eleven-thirty, I'm not sure where that's going to be held at, if it's at JF.
It's at JF.
Yeah.
The NEO Consortium COG meeting, one-thirty PM, building number eight, then on Tuesday, the Commissioners will hold regular session with a presentation by Geoghan County Tourism. The eighth will also have the planning to. and compensation of non-bargaining unit employees under the hiring authority of the Geogga County Board of Commissioners, with the exception of the Department of Jobs and Family Services effective with two thousand and fourteen payroll number seven. By an approximate increase of three percent, this increase does not currently apply to unclassified employees with under six months of service. This increase does not apply to employees serving a probationary period until the earlier of such time that either their probationary period ends, or their position is advertised as the revised wage scale rate to be affected, to be effective on the hiring date of the new employee. And postings for current job openings will be revised to reflect this change.
Yeah.
Okay, well, that sounds good.
All right.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Commissioner Smitty?
Aye.
Commissioner Rare?
Aye.
Commissioner Sperry?
Aye, motion stands approved.
And now we've got what our meeting schedule is here. Thursday, the twenty-seventh of this, this week, Commissioners will hold the regular session for the six-thirty PM meeting.
Here.
Yeah, probably here.
Yep. The four-one, Commissioners will hold regular session, four-one, Jobs and Family Services kickoff the reception for child abuse prevention month, eleven-thirty. I'm not sure where that's going to be held at, if it's at J F O.
It's at J F O.
Yeah.
The NEO Consortium COG meeting, one-thirty PM, building number eight. Then on Tuesday, the Commissioners will hold regular session with a presentation by Geogga County Tourism. The eighth will also have the Planning Commission meeting at seven PM.
Maybe.
Yeah. Four-nine, Geogga County Township Association Dinner will be at six-thirty, and that's going to be held at Russell Township Fire Department Rescue Center. The tenth, the Commissioners will hold regular session. And the eleventh, wonderful Nowacka Board of Directors, ten AM in Cleveland.
Okay, I'll make a motion to adjourn.
All right, so, second, third, and fourth.
Done, okay, what is that other one?